This is the Commissioner meeting of April 10th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Schick is absent. Director Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Schick had a family medical emergency he had to tend to last minute. Okay, we're going to have a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Four, public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex located at 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained at the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices, and I ask that my colleagues, we put our phones away. Approval of agenda. We have one amendment. There will be no executive session tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still move.
Second. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Number six, proclamations, certificates presentations. We have a proclamation recognizing April 19th, 2024 as Wear Purple Day. Commissioner DeGroot is going to read it. And we have Nick Kapitsnakas and Lisa Lombardo from the Department of Health and Human Services here to accept the proclamation. Thank you.
Proclamation. Whereas alcohol use disorder, AUD, is the most common type of substance abuse, substance use disorder in the United States, whereas 29.5 million people age 12 and older have had AUD in the past year, and more than 10% of U.S. children age 17 and younger live with a parent with AUD, and whereas more than 140,000, 100,000 persons die each year from alcohol-related causes, from driving crashes, other accidents, falls, fires, alcohol-related homicides and suicides, and whereas adults ages 26 and older who begin drinking before age 15 are 3.5 times more likely to report having alcohol use disorder in the past year than those who waited until age 21 or later to begin drinking. And whereas the month of April was established as Alcohol Awareness Month by the National Council of Alcoholism and Drug Dependents, NCADD, to ensure that families and communities have the resources, information, and options available to control the crisis of alcoholism. And whereas color purple, the color that is similar to the amethyst?
Amethyst.
Amethyst is used to represent alcohol awareness. Here is the reasoning behind the amethyst color. Amethyst is considered the most beautiful and valuable form of quartz. The word amethyst stems from a Greek word meaning without drunkenness. In ancient times, it was believed that anyone caring or wearing the stone could not become intoxicated. Anyone who displays the amethyst color on Wear Purple Day announces that they are, they know someone whose life has been improved through alcoholism treatment. Now therefore be, be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners has recognized that Friday, April 19th, 2024 is Wear Purple Day in recognition of Alcohol Awareness Month and encourages all of the citizens throughout the County of Sussex to join in wearing purple that day.
Want to say a few words?
Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for this proclamation bringing attention to Wear Purple Day for Alcohol Awareness Month. Alcohol Awareness Month activities like Wear Purple Day draw attention to the fact that alcohol remains the most reported substance use issue in Sussex County and that there is a lot of treatment recovery available. I would also like to thank all of the Sussex County Medical Alliance volunteers who work so hard for intervention programs to our communities. When I meet here tonight, I will join the staff of the Center for Prevention and Counseling at their youth empowerment showcase where Sussex County students are displaying their artwork tonight, showing their own ideas for alcohol and drug prevention. Thanks for your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture?
Yes.
And the next proclamation is recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we have Andrea Rieper from Kitty's House here to accept it.
Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Sussex County, and whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect, and whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harms children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems, risky behavior, and whereas the effects of child abuse are felt by communities as a whole and need to be addressed by the entire community, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners do proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. By the order of the County Commissioners, Jill Space, Commissioner Director, Chris Carney, Deputy Commissioner and Director, Jack DeGroot, William Hayden, and Earl Schick, Commissioner. I can't thank you guys enough at Kitty's House for all that you do because you guys truly protect the village.
I don't really have anything eloquently prepared by this time. Thank you guys so much for proclaiming this and bringing light to it because it is something that's uncomfortable to talk about. We really have been upping our prevention program this year, education. We go out to the community and give free body safety lessons. So if it's necessary, how do you come to your group? Whether you are youth-serving organization or not, we'll come out for free and get free. Thank you. Can we get a picture?
Yeah.
Number seven, public hearing. There is no public hearing at this meeting. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still move.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney and a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Floor's open. Anyone on agenda topics online? That was easy. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still move.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Number nine, Commissioners' comments. Start with Commissioner Hayden.
All right, back to something that I've been talking about a lot, but I have more information, and it's not good. So, the other day, my lawyer was contacted by the FBI in regards to food pantry. They wanted to speak with me. He arranged the meeting. They requested documents and asked a lot of questions. Questions they asked included individuals that are here, some not here, also about locations of where the food was stored, and other things. Documents requested were a bunch of opres that have been done to Sussex County Social Service by Mr. Winkler, email correspondence, and all documents provided to the information providing request was regarding the request. FBI would like certified audio records of every meeting after December 13th. They brought up some events that were done to me as well. The original documents that were used to stand around with the stolen ballot was sent to the media were deemed fake by the state police, and they were turned over for prosecution. They were not real. So, the FBI has this. It's not a joke. Talked to Doug. He will talk to somebody tomorrow and gotta be that. But they knew more than I thought they knew.
Do you want to touch on any meetings that you've attended this year on behalf of the county?
You've kind of made it so I can't do my job.
I have not made it so that you cannot do your job. Everyone does their jobs individually. I don't know where any of the Commissioners are during the day.
Well, it's my public comment section. If you want to bring that up in yours, you can do that.
Okay, okay. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes. So, to begin, I had the pleasure of following up with Sussex County Historical Society's President, Wayne McCabe, to have a meeting. So, we had a wonderful conversation that led me to attend Sussex County Historical Society's annual meeting. So, that was Tuesday night. It was terrific to meet the wonderful volunteers who are committed to preserving the history of our exceptional county. During the meeting, I was happy to hear that they will continue to host tours and events at their museum right here, 82 Main Street, Newton. In addition, one of the historical societies' bulls is in the future, is to form outreach by going to schools to educate 4th graders on the history of Sussex County. I think this is truly great and is important for the next generation to learn where we come from, especially our own county because it's our home. Next, for the Division of Health, Public Health Nursing will be attending two upcoming events with a focus on son's safety. One on Healthy Kids Day at the Sussex County YMCA on April 20th, 2024, and the second at the Family Health Expo at Project Self-Sufficiency on April 24th, 2024. The Office of Public Health Nursing provides basic health literature and handouts at all public events, including these, and they attend in order to reinforce healthy eating and physical activity for our community members as well as promote the prevention of cancer. A women's health screening clinic will be held on Thursday, April 18th, 2024, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, which is located at 201 Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers a variety of health screenings and education. This service is available free to uninsured and underinsured county residents who qualify for the New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detention Program, NJCEED. To schedule an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1246. For SCCC, Sussex County Community College and the American Legion Post 86 will host a 5K walk run around the County Community College campus for veterans' awareness. The mission of the event is to bring attention and substantially support the veterans of Sussex County. American Legion Post 86 and Sussex County Community College will leave veterans transitioning back to civilian life appreciate the support of a welcoming community. Entry fees will go a long way in providing educational resources and economic support for our veterans. The race consists of both a 5K and a fun walk, which will go around the campus. I'll be running into 5K. Invite all you to join. Yeah, 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 right? I'll let you know my time. But, well, I'll try to improve throughout the year. So, this is the start of it. But that's all I have. Thank you. God bless.
Great. Deputy Director Carney?
All right, I'll be brief. This is from the Department of Engineering and Planning, Bridge D38, carrying over County Route 519, Wannaj Avenue, over Jarbrook in Frankford Township. Project involves construction, full replacement of structure, and guide rail installation. Construction contract for the project is amount of $1,435,000, $33, or $1,435,033.13. It was awarded on March 27th. Sparwick Contracting is the contractor in Lafayette. Construction is scheduled to begin on April 16th, subject to other and other foreseen circumstances. I see the Mayor Frankford is here. Please let your constituents know that we will be doing this. This is install soil erosion, sediment control measures, demolish existing structure, stall coffer dams, dry piles, and construct pile caps and footings, construct concrete wing walls and bridge deck, pavement, guide rail, landscape, and incidental items of work. This total job is $1,435,000. Like I said, road closure and sign detour will be in place for the duration of construction, which is anticipated to last through the end of 2024. Access to driveways and municipal roads will be maintained throughout the construction. DPW, DPW Andover Crew has completed work to repair a section of failed asphalt pavement on County Route 519, Andover Borough. The failure of the asphalt was due to a weak roadway subgrade impacted by recent freeze thaw cycles. Work will be completed using a milling machine attached for skid steer and asphalt box. Division of Planning and Economic Development, the Division of Planning is responsible for managing service requests related to development review, general planning, farmland preservation, transportation, open space, right-to-farm, and the honey, and the Harvest Honey and Garlic Festival. As of April 8th, 2024, all service requests received by the Division are now being managed via the City Works Asset Management System. That's all I have for that. I did, I was able to talk to Mike Richards today, and I've been speaking about this a while, about doing our food, a food drive at the fair. So, he finally got with the people that need to set this up. So, we will be doing a food drive one day during the fair. He thinks it's going to be the Saturday of the fair, opening weekend. I also reached out, as he reached out to me, I reached out to Tammy Horstfield. Along with that, Sussex County Day, we'll be doing another food drive there as well. And she's looking at the logistics and where we're going to set that up. We don't want to have people bringing food all the way into where the Sussex County Day is. So, maybe I have to set something up, and I'll work on that with Christine and Lorraine, figuring out where we could set up maybe a sign and maybe a pickup truck. Maybe we get a DPW truck there or something like that, Bill, and then people could just drop off the food, walk in Sussex County Day, and have another food drive. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Division of Senior Services, Center for Lifelong Learning at Sussex County Community College. The Division of Senior Services collaborates with Sussex County Community College to offer educational presentations and classes to seniors through the Center for Lifelong Learning. Lifelong musician Wendy Fulham will present Part Two of the Rock and Roll Music of Our Lives in the Student Theater at SCCC on Friday, April 12th, 2024, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Take a walk through the history of rock and roll as it unfolded in the United States, from the days before rock, pre-1955, to the beginning of the 1980s. This event is free and pre-registration is required. To pre-register or obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services by calling 973-579-0555, extension 1277. Division of Senior Services, Matter of Balance. A Matter of Balance is a program designed to reduce the fear of falling and increase activity levels among older adults. A Matter of Balance program is available at the Stillwater Community Center located at 931 Swartzwood Road in Stillwater from 9:00 to 11:00 AM on Thursdays beginning April 18th and ending on June 6th, 2024. This eight-week program will help participants learn to set realistic goals to increase activity, change their environment to reduce fall risk factors, and learn simple exercises to increase strength and balance. To register or obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555. Medicare Presentation. Social Work Aging Supervisor Terry Seabird will be conducting a public presentation on the healthcare cornerstones, social security, Medicare, Medicaid, Affordable Care, and Extra Health Programs at the Main Library in Frankford on Tuesday, April 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM. To obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555. Coming up soon on April 25th is the Sussex County Chambers Chairman, Sussex County Chambers Toast to the Stars Award Program Luncheon, and our Deputy Director, Chris Carney, is up for an award that he may possibly win, the Chairman's Award, which is quite an honor. And other possible recipients of awards are the Sussex County Clerk's Office, the Sussex County Department of Health and Human Services, the Sussex County Library System, the Sussex County Sheriff's Office, and the Sussex County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Management. So, if anyone's free and they want to attend that, it's a luncheon at Crystal Springs, April 25th. The information is on the Chambers website. As Commissioners, we all set our own schedules, and we, we go to meetings. If there are meetings, we, we go out and we pursue meetings on different topics. So, we've all, let me rephrase that. Most of us have attended many meetings this year. Some of them we can't discuss because they're attorney-client confidentiality meetings, but we've all, most of us have attended many meetings. So, I would urge Commissioner Hayden to attend some meetings.
Told her earlier that I'm back in the game. I had some health issues. As you well know, I had the kidney stone thing going on. That was brutal, if you've ever had one.
But I saw on Facebook that someone had sent me that, that you were healthy, and that's why you can be a mech spike. So, you can't.
No, no, no. What she, I said was, look, that's the racing. I didn't race yet.
So, this is my comments.
Lie about me.
And now, the next thing I'll talk about, Deputy Administrator Lorraine Hens and I have been working on, along with Catholic Charities, a veterans' support group, and we've been brainstorming. We had a Zoom yesterday, and we are getting closer, and we're hoping that maybe within a month, we can get this up and running. Maybe once a month will be a Zoom for any veterans that might need to talk with other vets, and then one will be in person, and we're thinking that we're going to do it here at the Administrative Administration Center. I also attended a mayor's meeting this morning that the 24th Legislative District hosted, and it was nice to see many different mayors and council people, and Commissioner Schick attended that with me. And on a personal note, my family business, Space Farms, opened on March 29th for our 97th season. So, we're happy to do business here in Sussex County. That's all I have. Actually, I could ask you now instead of unfinished business. Do we have any update? Has anyone been contacted from the feds about the food pantry to anyone here in the county, other than apparently Commissioner Hayden?
I have not been contacted by any law enforcement agency, state or federal. We've not received any letters for inquiries, no subpoenas. I did confer with other department heads. Not aware of any other department head having been contacted. First, I would assume they would contact me, but I did reach out to a couple, and one while we were sitting here. No one's been contacted by anyone yet. I can't speak to the veracity of Mr. Hayden's statements, other than just my own practice, and I can't, fortunately, I don't think I've ever been the subject of an FBI investigation, so I can't say from firsthand knowledge. But typically, in order to protect chains of custody or to prevent spoliation or, or the intentional destruction of, of records, they would file subpoenas or make requests for documents and not have them, you know, that's how they would obtain them. But we've not received any such thing, correct or no?
Anyone been contacted from the AG's office on a no-show job for a county employee that worked in from November of '21 to August of '22 during COVID?
To try to like encompass all of them, I've not received any communications from any law enforcement agency, state or federal, about any issues pertaining to Sussex County.
Thank you. That's all I have. Okay, number 10, approval of consent.
I will say, that said, Mr. Hayden did invite me to, Commissioner Hayden did invite me to reach out to his lawyer tomorrow and to ask questions. So, with your permission, I will, my morbid curiosity will get the best of me, so I'll make the call.
Fine with me. Okay. Number 10, approval of consent agenda. There is no consent agenda tonight. Number 11, approval of minutes. The regular meeting, March 27th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting?
Still move.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Number 12, ordinance. We have no ordinance at this meeting. Number 13, appointments and/or resignations. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution A?
Still move.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden makes a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call vote? Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick is absent. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay, resolutions. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through S?
Still move.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney makes a motion and a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call vote? Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick is absent. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay, number 15, awards of contract, change bids, orders bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, oh, let me read this part, international, wait, that's from the rest of the other. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract, change orders, bids, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and has determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through D?
Still move.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and a second? Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick is absent. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Number 16, financial. A, Payment of Bills List A, April 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List A?
Still move.
Second.
Okay, that was Commissioner DeGroot made the motion, and Commissioner Hayden seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick is absent. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay, B, Payment of Bills List B, April 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay the Bills List B?
Still move.
And Commissioner Hayden and a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick is absent. Director Space?
Abstain.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Number 17, personnel. A, Resolution Regarding Personnel Agenda of April 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Still move.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney makes a motion and a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick is absent. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Number 18, administrative report.
Real quick, thank you, Director. We applied, with the last meeting, I said we were looking at three different grants, and we made the applications for them this past week. They've been sent to the state, to the Senator's Office for discretionary federal funding, and those three are for possible help with the main sewer line and installation in Frankfurt, and one, another one is environmental for street sweeping. That will allow us to get a shared service agreements for, for street sweeping for to meet the new DEP requirements that are coming up, and another transportation grant that would add another bus to our system that would allow us to have more different types of schedules for seniors and for the courts and stuff of that nature. And if you can see real quickly, the protectors are gone. We've done the pre-wiring. We're getting ready to get this thing sound up, and everybody will be able to hear in the back. So, just stay tuned. It's coming. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Sounds good. 19, County Council Report.
Only thing I'd like to tell you on this, the appraisal for the jail is underway. Spoke with the appraiser earlier this week, so they've started trying to keep that on a relatively shortly. So, it's somewhat of a complex appraisal process, given the building and where it's situated, but we're moving forward. By next meeting, I will come back to you with an outline of exactly all the steps we need to take to get from here to unloading the building.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Number 20, unfinished business. You have any? Number 21, new business. Oh, Bill, yes. Yes.
Yeah, that's the last part.
Bill Copanall, go ahead, Bill. Sorry, I was rushing it.
Skip and by. The Department has been working with, on two different initiatives.
Want to just state your department?
Department of Engineering and Planning.
Thank you.
Been working on two separate initiatives that are at a decision point where we need some guidance from the Commissioners themselves. The first project is the Office of State Planning. As I'm sure you're aware, is getting ready to update the development and redevelopment plan for the state. They are looking to identify a negotiating entity that will work with them representing the county or this region in the update process. What that generally will entail is a negotiating entity would be the point of contact between the State Office of Planning and any regional planning agencies, municipal and county government, to kind of collaborate and work through the development process. And then the state plan is ultimately updated that it will be a reflection of the plans that are in place at the local level, so county, municipal, and other regional planning agencies. They have set this up with the intent that the counties would ideally serve as a negotiating entity. But the county has an elective option not to. So Sussex County has an option to serve as a negotiating entity. It would be done through the Division of Planning. If the Commissioners were to choose that option, that additional work cannot be absorbed with the existing staffing within the division. So we would have to retain the services of a professional planner. Based on the information to date, we would anticipate that that will be between $80,000 and $100,000 undertaking, and it will require about the next 12 months. Other option, there's three options.
Just a quick question, though, and I apologize for interrupting you, but I think it's an important question. $80,000 to $100,000 that we're footing to vote for?
$80,000 to $100,000 that we would be putting in the bill.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And we would, if that was the option that we chose, we'd have to put together some sort of a request proposal for professional services, send it out, get solicitation back, and hopefully the rest. Based on the scope of work that we're currently in the process of developing, that's the first of three options. The section, the second option is the state is acceptable to people, counties, declining the responsibilities of being a negotiating entity. And if Sussex County chose not to be a negotiating entity, we could go back to the state and let them know that we're not in a position to do this. And the state would go out and either retain a consultant to serve as a negotiating entity, or identify another party to do it. Based on my discussions with, you know, the Office of Planning from the state and with Autumn from the Division of Planning, I do believe that we would still be able to provide constructive input into the process. But we just would not be tasked with the administration and management and coordination of all the efforts between the state and their efforts to interface with county and municipal governments. Certainly would not preclude our ability, you know, if we had an expression of interest at a local level, we certainly would have the ability to collaborate with any of the local municipalities, independent of being a negotiating entity. So I don't know that it is, you know, I don't think we're losing any ability to comment on the development of the plan as the state enhances it. The third option that is available is we could enter into an inter-local agreement with either another regional planning entity or another county. And, you know, we could split the responsibilities of doing this. We've reached out to both Warren and Morris. They are not in a position to move in that direction. Their resources are pretty well maxed out with what they're doing and the ability just to manage how, they're going to choose to manage this in-house. So those are really the three options. I think in discussions with Autumn, if you're looking for a recommendation, I think Autumn and I are both in concurrence that we would recommend that we go back to the state and just let them know that we just are not in a position to absorb the additional work that they're asking us to absorb and have them identify an entity that would serve as a negotiating entity, and then we'll work with them moving forward. Ford can, I don't need an answer right now.
Okay, I think we'll have to, like, maybe have this in executive session next time.
I mean, I don't know if we even need to do that. I think that's why I kind of wanted Bill here to explain. If anybody had any questions, it's time to ask. I understand that a little bit more, just because I spent some time with Bill, and I didn't want to talk to you guys as a third party, because he explained a lot better than I could have. Although I thought it was C that you picked on the test, but apparently it's B.
I like to see.
C, well, C goes back to your shared service with the other counties. And now we're pretty with Bill.
B concerns me.
C goes back to a shared service, and it would mean that we would have to develop the local, the inter-local agreement. We'd have to find an entity that was willing to partner with us. We'd have to develop it to identify the level of responsibilities of both entities and how it is managed moving forward. Does not necessarily mean that, I think even under C, we, Sussex County, we'd still be looking to retain a professional planner services, not to the either 100, but, you know, maybe half of that. Because at the end of the day, we still do not have staff that we can assign to manage this. And the last time we went through it, it is a very cumbersome process and requires a lot of involvement and coordination and meetings that the staff just, we just don't know, we just don't have the staff to do that.
B concerns me. Anytime we are opening the door for the state to give their advice isn't the best situation.
But there will be, if I'm correct, we will have a subcommittee that we, a couple Commissioners will be able to sit on, along with some other, possibly municipalities, Mayor's Council, whatever it may be.
Well, under B, if we went back to the state and we said, we're not in a position to do this, identify an entity or a consultant, you want to act as a negotiating entity. My understanding is that entity will work with us no different than we would be working with, you know, municipalities.
I'm just concerned it's their choice of who they pick, what their entity might want for Sussex County might not be what Sussex County wants for Sussex County. That's my concern.
Well, that's, I could tell you that this will be the second time that we've gone through this process. It was an enormous amount of effort to even get to a point where a plan was adopted by the state. You know, it's always a matter of opinion, but I think the general consensus, if you ask people, will be that the plan the state adopted really was not reflective of what the county or municipality was looking for. Bits and pieces of our goals and objectives got put into it. But I don't know that that was, I don't know how much our.
Maybe we could work on C a little bit more.
We can work on C a little bit more. Kind of exhausted other entities. We still are waiting, if you're back, the state could be an option. But we absolutely heard back from Warren and Morris that they came out and just.
Any other Commissioners? Hayden?
I agree with you. I would never relinquish anything to the state. I don't think, giving up any of our.
I don't, I would anticipate that a consensus of the county would be not to relinquish stuff to state. But the reality is, you know, we don't think we would be able to find an inter-local agreement that we get in place and try to partner.
When, what would they do? Hire a consulting firm for us?
They have, they've been indecisive on exactly what they would do.
That's what scares.
I believe they would have the option of hiring a consultant that would serve as the negotiating entity. Or they certainly could just absorb it in their own staff someplace.
If they hired a consultant for us, would we absorb that cost?
I have, no, that's not my understanding. My understanding is that we decline it. Then any cost relating to identifying a negotiating entity is that more by the state.
Then my next question becomes, consultants negotiating for us, do we have any input with the consultants?
I would, it is my understanding that we would be consulted through this process so that any plans, and we know the closest plans we had was the 2007 Strategic Road Plan, which is.
So.
Jack was eight.
So it is based on my discussions and Autumn's discussions with representatives of the state. The state would work with us. We'd get all the information. We'd be able to provide any kind of comments, feedback, input, plan comparisons. And we certainly would have the ability to do it collaboratively with any municipal governments that wanted to, you know, treat this as a collaborative effort.
So I'm seeing it a little different. And I don't want the state involved in a county more than it has to be. But I feel like this is an opportunity for us to have our voice heard instead of the opposite of what it seems like you might be thinking as. And I'm not trying to argue with you by all means. It's just, I get your point 100%. But I feel like they're going to do what they want to do anyway, because the state always does. So at least we're going to have the opportunity, unless I'm wrong, but this is what I'm hearing, we're going to have the opportunity to voice our concerns along with the municipalities. We will have a subcommittee. We will be able to say, hey, no, that doesn't work here in Sussex County. This is not Bergen, this is not Passaic.
We have a voice with the Highlands Council, too, and it doesn't help.
We have voices in all of the stuff the state does. You know, they publish all of the rules, regs, anybody can comment on. The Division of Planning usually reviews and provides comments on all this stuff. We have that ability. They would entertain any comments that we cared to offer. What they would do in response to it, you know, is really at the discretion of.
Of course. So the consultant would come up with an idea. We would see it, we would review it. So it would almost be like we're having.
I don't know that the consultant would come up with an idea. I think the consultant would work with the county the same way that the consultant would work with all the municipalities.
Okay.
Or the county would work with the municipalities if we were the negotiating entity, to compile all existing planning documents, review them, and then compare those documents with whatever it is the state is proposing for consistencies or mutations. And really, you're looking to get these planning documents and identify where they're similar, where they deviate. If they deviate, making a case to modify, update the state plan to be more in line with whatever the local planning documents are. I don't believe the consultant is going to be making that case. I think the county would still be in a position to make that case, or any of the municipalities. I think the consultant is just really managing the administration and facilitating this and pulling all the information together that the state needs to review their proposed plan in comparison to any existing plans that are either county or municipalities, or regional, so like the Highlands.
I think we'll have to, like, discuss it further.
Yeah, and really, if there's questions, if you need clarifications, by all means.
We know how to find you.
Bill, are you under any timeline? Is there an end? Do we, when do you need to let somebody know when this?
So there is a tentative timeframe for this. I can tell you the state is already months behind schedule for where they had hoped to be. Because before they can release the preliminary plans, they need comments and concurrence by all the state agencies, and they have yet to get that. So once they have that, that really will start the process. And what they are anticipating is any of the counties or negotiating entities are already preemptively, should know this is coming, and are working to collaborate and start gathering all the information that would be.
So we got a week or two, couple weeks?
We have a little bit of time, but it's something that we really need to decide soon.
And in defense of Bill, too, though, he brought this up a while ago, and I think there's been two faces that have changed on this Commissioner Board since you brought this up. So we were aware of it, at least Commissioner Hayden, Commissioner Space and myself were aware of it.
Yes, I mean, it has been an ongoing discussion. We've been heading in this direction. We're just getting to a point where we need to just pin this down and make this thing.
Just not there yet to say B.
That's why, I said, I'm just, any questions, if you have any convenient information,
if you need clarifications, if you want other information on this,
we'd be more than happy to get it to you.
And we're looking to just make it more efficient.
Right. Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, the other thing.
Uh-oh.
There's more.
So the Department has also been working with the Mercers and Transportation Planning Authority, N J T P A, to develop in Sussex County, local road safety plan. This was a partnership that the Commissioners authorized entering into the T P A back in 2023. The project has advanced, but it's really been advancing at the T P A level. So the T P A has went out, solicited professional services. They've identified a consultant that they will have working with Sussex County on the development of this plan. Where we are right now is, as part of the development process, the county has to identify a local implementation committee. The committee is going to be four groups of people that will help steer the development of the plan, identify potential techniques, methodologies that could be incorporated within our systems, our transportation systems, to improve overall operational safety. So what this plan really is, if you've probably seen, there's a big push at the federal level for a Vision Zero plan. And the Vision Zero plan is putting efforts into identifying what the most common contributing factors are to particular crashes with the goal of eliminating serious crashes and fatalities. Obviously, there's a lot of components that are involved in that, and this is one of those components. So the plan, what this committee and plan will do, the plan will look at it systemically, the county and municipal roadway infrastructure in Sussex County, start to collect data, analyze the data, and begin to identify what the commonalities are of high accident locations. And that information will be used to help identify what's referred to as proven safety countermeasures, which are safety enhancements that can be incorporated into the systems that will help really work towards a Vision Zero objective. The local implementation committee will be working with the consultant and, you know, obviously, the Department of Engineering and Planning from the get-go to help identify and steer this plan. And it will ultimately be a document that the county, predominantly through the Department of Engineering and Planning, will use to help identify recommended safety enhancements that can be either done systemically, so we can do it system-wide, that could be incorporated into projects we already have ongoing, or they could be standalone projects. So as an example, if you did this and you found that there were a number of run-off-the-road accidents on horizontal curves, there are a number of low-cost safety enhancements that you could consider implementing to help reduce the occurrence of those. Signs, I think Sussex County is proactive and uses a lot of stuff with signs. You can also look at the geometry of the curve. And you can consider high friction surface treatments of certain curves. You could consider the rumble strips. You've seen rumble strips on a lot of the, you know, a lot of the state roads up here in the county have them. So this committee and this plan will help steer the decisions that the county makes moving forward in what we do to help improve the operational safety of the road system. The federal highway through the T P A identified a recommended list, a recommended collection of groups or individuals that would be appropriate for inclusion in this type of committee. So it's engineering, it's government, county and/or government, either elected or administrative officials. It's. government, county and/or government, either elected or administrative officials, it's EMS, it's, it's law enforcement, it's health transit-type systems. So what we've done, and I believe it was distributed to all of you, is the department took the liberty of proposing a tentative target list for a roster. So what I'm looking for is some feedback on if the roster looks, if you, if you have any comments on it, if you'd like to change it, if you'd like to add other people. We're really looking to get, like, first representation, so some rural representation, some urban representation, with keeping in mind that it's really targeting between like a 10 and 15-person committee. We're not looking to have, you know, a representative from every municipality. We're looking to get a representative that would be a fair representation of particular context or area.
Sounds good. So you'll email us?
I, I will email you. I sent it, I don't know if Christina has had a chance to distribute it, but I sent the information her with the, with the local implementation committee and the potential roster. The board absolutely has the ability, and I would encourage some participation at the board level, and, and the administration. So, you know, above, above the department.
Director, maybe we could bring up at our mayor's luncheon, when we sit with the mayors again, or when you sit with the mayors again, and kind of ask.
So we need to, we need, we need to start, if the list looks appropriate, what I would like to do is start reaching out to people. We have to identify, you know, we have the target, but now we need to identify people that are going to have the time to do.
Right.
The TPA is very optimistic that we will have this done within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So that's not going to be able to wait.
Yeah. Yes. We need to get moving on it.
Okay. Well, we could get moving on it. Get us the email and we'll get started.
We sit here and we, we, we wait, wait, and then get something, because it took a long time to empty it.
Yep. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, man.
We're staying and coming.
Again, if there's any questions on any of that.
We know how to reach you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any new business? Okay. Number 22, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. And I should state that it's not a Q and A. It's not where you come up and you can question the commissioners and we respond back. It's, you tell us your thoughts, and if we have a comment to make, we will make it. So, anyone? Anyone?
Motion?
Motion.
Oh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
To open the floor for public comment. Okay. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Hayden. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Kenneth Collins, is his name up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not. It only reports.
Kenneth Collins, Andover, New Jersey. Mr. Hayden, your claims of innocence are futile and irrelevant. At this point, your career is over. So I'm going to start out tonight by asking for your resignation this evening without further delay. If you don't understand that every day you remain a county commissioner is an affront to every veteran who actually served our nation and a disservice to the community you've sworn to serve, then you are truly too far gone to rescue, sir. Resign, Bill, tonight. There's still time. I'm here tonight to talk about an organization that has done more harm to Sussex County in the 25 years I've lived here than any other organization. This organization has repeatedly anointed the inept to positions of power. In these positions, the anointed inept have saddled Sussex County residents with roughly $30 million in debt from their inept handling of the Sussex Solar scam. The anointed inept were due, and the taxpayers are still paying the bill. Perhaps some of you sitting here right now were anointed to your positions by this organization. This organization is clearly very dangerous, and they are out of control. Sadly, they're the only ones who can petition to remove Commissioner Hayden from office by petition. What is the name of this dangerous organization causing so much harm to our community? The Sussex County Republican Committee, the SCRC, run currently by Joseph LaBarbera. I can only hope that they, and you, and he, do all you can to recall this abomination. You turned Bill Hayden into Senator Arno's lapdog, and you're surprised when the pit bull bites you. Fix the SCRC. Hayden is just a symptom. Fix the root of the problem.
One minute.
Resign, Bill. The lawyers coming for you all next week.
I can add you to the list. Okay. Anyone else?
Kathy Brett at Hampton Township. I'm, I'm here basically for the same reason. Basically, I feel something needs to be done. This is costing our county in reputation, in money, in time. This is getting, this is totally ridiculous with all these accusations and now these so-called tort notices that were sent out to be suing all of you people. This is just out of control, and I feel that the person who has started all this, if they are guilty of stolen valor, they have no credibility whatsoever, and they are absolutely shameless, and they need to resign immediately. And if they refuse to resign, which I assume that's what's going to happen because they are shameless, then there should be a recall, and, and that should take care of the problem. This is costing us, like I said, too much money, too much time. There are lots of things that this county needs, and they're not being taken care of by everyone because certain people are taking out their own bad debts. And I do have a concern about one thing in the county, the food pantry. There have been lots of accusations about the food pantry. As of now, to my knowledge, none of these have been proven. I am concerned that people are going to not want to give to the food pantry anymore because of these accusations. And.
I have the same concern.
I'm, that, that is very upsetting to me. This is really bad time economically, and I think people are in desperate need, and I would hate for the food pantry to not get what they need. I mean, I, I know what this is like. I'm a, I'm a volunteer at Betty's Bodega, so I know what it's like, and I know that working people are struggling, and I wouldn't want people to go without because of.
One minute.
Accusations that, so far, we don't know that, you know, that anything has been proven. And it's just, it's just very sad to me. And I, and again, I say, this person should resign. And if they're shameless enough to not resign, then there should be a recall. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi again.
Hello.
James Gaddy from Florida Township. So you all already know that I am the chief operating officer and part of the senior leadership team at Sussex County Community College. About two months ago, the college received a letter from an employee detailing all sorts of issues that essentially lead to a toxic work environment. Because of that and because of comments John Connolly had made, I brought it to the attention of our security team that John Connolly had a gun in his office. We, we danced around that for a few weeks with alleged, alleged. At the last commissioner meeting, I played the tape for you all, where Dr. Connolly admitted that he did have a gun on campus. So that was my first allegation when I spoke up, and that's been working through. The second allegation that I made when I spoke here at the commissioners' meeting about a month ago was that the college was sitting on over $20 million of the taxpayer money without plans or without factual plans as to how to use that money. And again, we confirmed that that is the case. There's $20 million that Dr. Connolly admitted to sitting on in reserves. There's about another $7 million that is set aside specifically for capital projects at the college. The third allegation is the hostile work environment toxicity, blackmail, recording, as well as retaliation. And as of today, as of yesterday, I have been on leave from the college for speaking out about my working conditions, and that has been a month. So if you speak out about your working conditions and then you're suspended from your job, that is one of the most clear forms of retaliation. And while I acknowledge that.
One minute.
The county commissioners do not have direct jurisdiction over the, over the college. This is the county's community college. You guys fund it. You appoint the trustees. And the trustees' failure to investigate this timely is putting financial aid at risk, putting the amazing staff and faculty we have there in even more challenging terms. And personally, you know, I suspect that I'll end up losing my job. So I just ask you once again to please put as much pressure on the, on the board of directors as possible so that way we can work this out without resorting to unbestowed label.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else?
John Snyder, San Antonio Township. Some of you may have been on the board since December of 2022. I addressed to you the concerns come through 640, also Stevens or Benans Road, the street line. And a few minutes ago, the county engineer was talking about a local road safety plan. I wrote this up in December of 2022. I had two informal conversations with the engineer, and I sent them a letter in November of 2022. Still waiting for a response. Sent another letter in March, March 8, I guess, in response to that, because I pointed out, there were two young children who ride bicycles on that road. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with it, if you've ever gone to the Walpach Inn. Soon as you pass the blinking light that heads to the bridge, that's what I'm talking about, that stretch in there. It's 1.3 miles long. You're coming from Leighton, where it's 30 miles per hour. As soon as you pass the intersection within 100 feet, it says 40. About 3/10 mile further down the road, there's a warning of 30, 30 miles per hour. But right after that, 50. So wait a minute, you just had a 30 mile warning here, and now within 400 feet, 50. And as you drive through there, it ain't nice. Very limited sight distance. But the thing that sets me the most is I sent in two letters and had not received a response.
Okay. I saw you today, and I told you that I was going to get back to you. So I do plan on getting back to you on that. So, but that was just this afternoon, and I haven't had a chance because I had other meetings this afternoon.
Yeah, there's another letter here that went out about a month ago from Mayor Harper in San Antonio Township. Pretty much saying the same thing. That we thought this, before I spoke, I think it was May of 2022, sent a letter, no response to the mayor. Anyone else?
Right. I will.
I know I'm not a very important person, just a little taxpayer in Canada, but.
Very important to me. One minute.
You're talking about road safety. That's what I brought up.
Right. I will definitely get back to you.
I don't have a vegetable stand out there. I don't want people to come in. I don't even have a house there yet. But, and also, I pointed to Jill, there are at least seven mailboxes along the guardrail. If you were living here, you'd have to cross over this 50 mile per hour road, which to me, that's 206. And theoretically here, just, next time you go through, I say, wait a minute, what does this have in common with 206?
Right. That's, like I said, it's very similar to like 519, just past, past Space Farms. That's 35 that goes right to a 50, and they have mailboxes across the street also.
Fortunately, no one's injured, but I'm on record now to say, hey, if you've got a concern, I was really surprised when I heard they were talking about safety enhancements of safety committee. Look, that's what I was talking about two years ago.
Time? Thank you. Hey, anyone else?
Hello again. With Glen Hall, San Antonio Township. I will back up what Mr. Snyder just talked about, about the conditions through 640 in San Antonio. It's, it's interesting that this greatest part of the road is 40 miles an hour, and when you get to the curving part of the road with the dips where you can't see what's ahead of you, it's 50. That's what I have to say about that. So, I mean, it's kind of the backwards. I can understand it maybe being 50 for the straight part, but when you get to the curves and whatnot, you have to reduce it, you know, if it went the other way. Food for thought.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
Still moves.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney makes a motion in a second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Number 23, reminders. Please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Number 24, there is no executive session. Okay. Number 25, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moves.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden makes a motion. A second?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Motion carries. What time is it? 7:05. Okay. Meeting adjourned, 7:05. Meeting adjourned.